For victim assistance to sheriff's office inmates and the juvenile department's youth. Seem to be all of them.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion, any further discussion?
Oh, I don't know that it really takes some discussion, but the project on Brown Road, where is it, 45th Avenue anyway, it's been moving along, we keep adding to it, and it's getting completed.
Okay. Well, no further discussion. All those in favor, approving the consent counter, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's done. Our first action item today is under Community Services, consider approval of an order appointing Gloria Roy to the Oregon Garden Foundation Board with a term ending January 2021. And I think you're gonna kick this off.
Yeah, they put my name on it, and they expect a great presentation, probably not gonna happen, but I will say this, Gloria Roy is our recent head legal counsel, I think she retired about a month ago, worked with me very hard on the Oregon Garden Foundation and related activities, and when she left, expressed an interest to serving on the Oregon Garden Board, and I couldn't be happier. We get a whole lot of, I'll call institutional knowledge and insight, and first I thought she wasn't kidding, and I told Gloria, "You don't have to just, just 'cause I need you." She said, "No," she was serious, so I certainly want to take that opportunity, and I, right now, make a motion that we do appoint Gloria Roy to the Oregon Garden Foundation Board.
I'll second your motion, and my comments are much along your line of yours, is I think she'll be a great asset, and we miss her already here at the county, but things go on, and it'll be great to have her in that position, just for background and knowledge. Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next item is under the Health Department, consider approval of contract for services with Community Action Agency for $152,000 to provide alcohol and drug treatment services for Marion County Drug Court. Morning, Scott.
Morning, Commissioners, thanks for having us here this morning. I'm Scott Richards, Division Director with the Health Department, and with me from our drug treatment program.
I'm Teri Morgan, Clinical Supervisor for Marion County Alcohol and Drug Treatment Services.
We're here today to talk about the contract with Community Action Agency for providing services for the Marion County Drug Court. The Drug Court has been in action since around 2001, started by Judge Dennis Graves, who also, a few years later, was active in the implementation of our first mental health court as well in Marion County. We've provided a variety of support and involvement with the Drug Court since its inception, but it wasn't until two years ago that we actually became the treatment provider for the Marion County Drug Court. So, we've now have a couple of years of providing those services, we are before you as a new contract to provide those services, and Teri is gonna tell you a little bit about what's happened in the last couple of years and some of the successes we have with the Drug Court.
Good morning. One of the things I'd like to say first and foremost, when we met with Judge Leith and his coordinator to discuss providing services for Drug Court, it was very important to us to include medication-assisted treatment services, including methadone and suboxone, to help address the opioid epidemic. That has been a great success. Previously, methadone was not provided service for Drug Court. Since that time, we've provided services for 120 participants in Drug Court, 30 are currently in treatment, we've had 37 successful graduates, we're at about a 50% success rate, and about 50% of our participants are also participating in medication-assisted treatment. We have two half-time professional recovery mentors working in the community, court meets weekly, the expectations are that they're working on their GED, employed, or participating in a community service activity every week, and it's a very holistic approach to reintegrating them into the community, and our national statistics show about a 75% of Drug Court participants don't reoffend after graduating from Drug Court.
So, we're really pleased to be providing the services, I think it's gone extremely well in these first two years, and we would ask that you approve the contract for us to continue to provide Drug Court services. Any questions for us about that?
Yeah, thank you. Scott, or maybe, Teri, this is a question for you, you said you had 37 graduates, and in what period of time was it for that 37?
That's been in the last two-year period.
Two-year period?
Yes.
Okay. I know the Drug Court, as Scott said, has been going on since the early 2000s, if I remember right, I remember sitting in there with Judge Graves observing that many, many years ago, and all the resources within the community that are involved in the holistic approach that you talked about, so this is one piece of that that we're approving this contract for, but there's a lot of other important pieces with mentors and people that are coming alongside, so appreciate your good work.
All right.
Okay.
So, Chair Cameron, if I could, I'd make a motion that we do approve the contract for services with Community Action Agency to provide drug and alcohol services for Marion County Drug Court.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next item is still under the Health Department, but I think we're gonna have another guest presentation. Consider approval of the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Health Authority for $290,277 for HIV early intervention and outreach services. And Pam, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Pam Hutchinson, Public Health Division Director for the Health Department.
And I'm Tessa Robinson, Public Health Nurse Program Manager for Public Health Clinic Services.
So, this intergovernmental agreement is one of two competitive grants that Public Health applied for and has recently been notified that we are being awarded, so we're here to request approval so that we can accept this funding. It's funding that's targeting communicable disease, so both of the grants that we applied for target communicable disease, this one has a potential for annual renewal over five years, which is good for some sustainability, and it focuses on services to high-risk populations. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Tessa to talk a little bit more in specifics, and then we can answer any questions you might have.
Good morning. I think I've met with you guys before, but to kind of give another overview, this grant is targeted at individuals who either are HIV-positive and are not linked to care, or individuals who are HIV-positive, that their status is not known. So, part of, a big part of the grant is to work on outreach services with a mobile unit, and that would be targeted to populations and individuals who engage in high-risk behaviors. And, sure, do you have any questions, or?
No, I was hoping to hear more, though.
You want more?
Yeah, what would be early intervention? So, it says out of care, newly diagnosed, so what, a doctor diagnoses and turns that information in the Health Department, and there's contact reach, is that how that would go?
Right, so when individuals are identified as being HIV-positive, newly, new cases, the Public Health Department, our communicable disease program, will investigate that new case, and then refer them to HIV Alliance or the state contracted case management organization. And the goal of that is to link them into care early, so that prevents new infections. If someone is linked to care and they're on antiretrovirals, they will, you know, and their, their low viral load means that they would be less likely to transmit it to other individuals, so part of prevention is keeping those who are HIV-positive linked to care and on medication.
The other piece of this work is the early intervention has to do with case finding, so really getting out in the community, because sometimes people who have these communicable diseases are less likely to access, like, say, a primary care provider, and so we will have a mobile team that will go out into the community to meet people where they, you know, live, or where they are congregating, to see if we can do early case finding and get people tested and get them into care, so that they can maintain their health and continue to work or, you know, be productive.
So, kind of obvious, but without this grant, and what we've currently been doing is not providing that service, is that what you'd say, this will allow this to happen?
We do basic case investigation, which what that means is we talk to the person, we find out, or we interview them to see if we can find out what the possible source is, we also talk with them about other people that may be at risk because of, you know, their interactions with others, so that you can try and stop it there. And, so we do that right now, but this will expand our ability to get out there and find people earlier, because a lot, I don't know what the statistic is, but there's a significant number of the population who have HIV that don't know they have it, so we wanna find those people.
Okay.
We could ask, I could ask a lot of detailed questions, like, where do you go to find that type of population, but I was thinking some of our homeless, homeless population?
We have letters of support from several community partners, including the Sheriff's Office, some homeless, homeless would be another target population, runaway youth, IV drug user community, so all of those are different target areas that we will reach out to, and part of it'll, it'll, you know, be a gradual thing, 'cause we've gotta build that trust and for people to know we're available and that this, this testing is available, and we can provide information and help with the referral process.
Great.
I have no more questions, so if I could, Chair Cameron, I'd approve, or make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Health Authority for $290,277 for HIV early intervention and services.
And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And thank you, Tessa, and Pam, for all the work that you're doing, I know there's a lot of other things that, that I get to get a little teeny piece of education.
We'll be back soon.
Thank you.
Our next item business is to consider approval of an order appointing Dr. Paul Colho to the Local Alcohol and Drug Planning Committee with a term ending December 31st, 2019, and Lisa's here, I believe. Oh, Scott's gonna do it, okay, and I probably butchered that name, close enough.
Scott Richards, Division Director with the Health Department, and with me is Dr. Paul Quelo.
Quelo.
So, I'm glad I got it right, too, since I met Dr. Quelo just for the first time a couple of months ago. As you know, we've had some reorganization with the Health Department, and I just recently joined as one of the staff members present at the Alcohol and Drug Planning Committee, and shortly thereafter, actually, I think through an email exchange with Pam Hutchinson, ended up responding to Dr. Quelo, who reached out to us with, expressing his interest in participating in this committee. It's clear that he has a strong passion for doing some good things about the opioid epidemic, so I, in talking with Ray Wilson, the current Chair of the Alcohol and Drug Planning Committee, he recalled actually trying to recruit Dr. Quelo to participate in the committee years ago, so without much effort on our part, here he is, and already has sat in a couple of the committee meetings to see what's going on, and we think he will make some very positive contributions to the committee and welcome him joining us.
Dr. Quelo, would you like to say anything, introduce yourself?
I'm Paul Quelo, I'm an employed physician at Salem Health, my interests are pain management and opioid harm reduction. You know, over the last 20 years, we've seen the epidemic morph from an iatrogenic or prescribed opioid epidemic into one that's now becoming an illicit opioid epidemic with heroin and fentanyl. And it's here, and it's here in Salem, and I believe Marion County MAT has felt it, it's had to double in size over the last year or so, and we're feeling it in the hospital with opioid overdoses in the emergency department, and then opioid-related complications, valve infections, infections of the skin, infections of the spine, that occur in the hospital. So, you know, as Scott said, my passion is to be involved in harm reduction, to try and reduce the harms to the community. The OHA has given us some funding to hold community meetings and two more summits on harm reduction and what the, to try and galvanize the community around it, so I look forward to working with the community and finding out what your goals are, what you wanna work on to try and reduce the harms to folks in Marion County.
Great, yeah, question?
Well, yeah, I guess some more statement, Marion County was leading an effort on awareness of opioid troubles about five years ago, I'd probably point Commissioner Carlson for the main instigator, so we're way ahead of the curve, now I hear the same things we were saying five or six years ago, both on a state and a national basis, but there was also a mention of a particular problem in Marion County, they were kind of highlighted, so I don't know where I'm going with that circle, other than I thought we were ahead of it, but apparently we're not.
You know, as the, as the epidemic morphed, you know, to an illicit epidemic, cartels have come into the area that supply illicit heroin, fentanyl, carfentil now, all over the United States. This was kind of described in a very good book by Sam Quinones called Dreamland, and that's here, the cartels are here, unfortunately, they're all along the I-5 corridor, so, you know, my efforts as a physician are to reduce and try and limit prescribing so that it's not harmful, but now, our efforts need to move over to that illicit market, to treating it, prevention, providing buprenorphine or methadone treatment, and other harm reduction measures that we can do in the community.
Yeah, thank you. I just been to, I think, three or four opioid presentations, one at SEDCor, where our district attorney, we had a doctor from Kaiser that talked about how alternatives now and what they're working on in practices, had one at City Club with the sheriff, and Paige Clarkston was there as well, and then we just had a presentation last week at our Public Safety Coordinating Council, and Chief Ferraris from Woodburn is serving on the Governor's Task Force, he gave us an update with what's going on there, but the thing that stands out that I continue to hear in these presentations is that we haven't even seen it the worst yet, that it's on the East Coast and the Midwest, and it's moving this way, and you just mentioned, Doctor, that there's a cartel up and down the I-5 corridor that, it sounds like it's, everybody that I listen to says it's just beginning to get really bad, so I don't know what the answer is to get out in front of this even, even more, but as I sat there last week at the Public Safety Coordinating Council, we had a doctor from, oh, what's the doctor's, not Salem Health, but the MVP or?
WVP.
WVP, she spoke about all these alternatives, and of course, I have a herniated disc that I did in 2010, and I reactivated it that Monday, and I was listening to this, and I'm thinking, "Wow, what could I use for my pain?" In fact, Bruce and I were talking about this on the way up the elevators, the alternatives is physical therapy, and, you know, taking some things to reduce the swelling and icing it, and just having to manage that in a, in a whole different way, but I was sitting there listening to that thinking, "Whoa, I wish I had something right now to make me feel better, 'cause I could barely sit there." And it's still here this morning, Commissioner, so don't, don't get me sideways.
You give me opportunities, I'm just gonna let it all pass.
The last comment, Doctor, I just really appreciate your willingness to serve, I was trying to read your application, and I can tell you're a doctor.
I thought the same thing, I was gonna mention that.
Looks like a prescription for something, but I couldn't tell you what it is, yeah.
Pain management, I can see.
Yeah, okay, great, you wanna make a motion?
I do, I'm really pleased to be able to make the motion approving the order appointing Dr. Paul Quelo Local Alcohol and Drug Planning Committee.
And I'll second the motion, seeing no more discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for your service, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, our next action item is consider approval of an order appointing Jacqueline Lung and Sharon Howar to the Health Advisory Board with terms ending December 31st, 2021, and it looks like Pam's gonna come up and do this.
Okay, so we're really excited to be, to have so many new members joining us today in these boards. The Health Department's really been making an effort to kind of revitalize our Health Advisory Board, and, oh, sorry, we're making an effort to really revitalize our Health Advisory Board, and it's been very successful with Lisa Miller's help from volunteer services, it's really made a difference to have her posting and advising us, so just to give a little credit there. So, we have two applicants for the Health Advisory Board from the public health side, and one is Jackie Lung, who is the leader of Micronesian Island Community or nonprofit organization in our area, so we're, it's really great to have, to add to the diversity of our Health Advisory Board, she couldn't be here today, so just to mention her, and then our other applicant is Sharon Hoyer, a longtime partner of Public Health, she works for Salem Health, she's been instrumental in the development of that beautiful community health education center over at the hospital that is available to the community and provides so many free resources for people needing health information or, or counseling about their diabetes or whatever, lots of resources there, she's also been a great partner with the Health Department on our community health assessment process, I think we're, this is your third time that we're going into, we're just launching a new, every five years, we redo it, and so she's, she's there at the table on our steering committee, she also is part of our community health improvement plan partnership, so leading resources at Salem Health to help improve the health of the community collaboratively with other partners, and Sharon really has her finger on the pulse of the health, I think, of our community, so I'm thrilled that she's willing to serve on the Health Advisory Board and put her forward for, recommend her for appointment.
Great, welcome, Sharon.
Thank you very much, it's both a privilege and an honor to be considered for this position.
Anything, anything else you wanna tell us about?
I joined this community in, and I'll just tell a really quick story, in 2008, and I came from the Phoenix, Arizona area, and I think what I was most kind of amazed by coming to Salem is the wonderful and rich ethnic diversity that I found here in Salem, and it very much mirrored Phoenix, which I would not have expected before I got here, and what was most impressive was how this community and the nonprofits come together in a non-competitive way, which is totally remarkable from anybody that's worked in any other area of the, of the United States, I would say, how the community comes together to really address the needs of those that are most vulnerable, and that's an area that I'm extraordinarily passionate about, and have had the privilege of working with the Public Health Department to do those assessments, and then more importantly, to put the plan together by bringing the nonprofits to the table, to bring, and government and community agencies as well, to bring forward plans to really impact change, so it's really been a remarkable experience in the last eight years. My personal passion is around food insecurity and food systems development, so I was really instrumental in getting the, I live in Jefferson, Marion County, very small, little community, as you know, not a lot of resources, and bringing food banks and, and resources to a small, very rural community is my personal passion, 'cause that's my home and my community, but being able to do that at a global level for Marion County is really important to me, so I'm really pleased to be here.
Great, thank you very much for your service, and you're also a Salem Health employee, right?
I am.
So, doctor was, you are, or doctor is, you are, and, and really appreciate the, you know, your comments about how this community works together, and this is a personal observation, in the last, hmm, probably five years to see Salem Health, maybe it's longer than that, but I remember it seemed like that there was this silo over here, and it's been great to see leadership really become involved in the community and recognize, I know we've always had great healthcare at the hospital, but, but extending that out for, and I think the CCOs and all these things that have been changing have kind of helped everybody say, "We gotta break down some of these barriers and get out there," but I really appreciate the people that Salem Health puts forward in our community, it's, it's awesome.
Well, thank you.
And Dr. Quelo, by the way, is a rock star, we are really lucky to have him in our community, and so are you, now that he's part of that team.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, no, yes, should I let you speak?
Yeah, of course you should.
Okay, no conflict of interest here.
Now, I'm a member of the Community Benefit Committee, and we get a lot of staff services, and Sharon is a big help on that committee, and I appreciate what she does, and I really appreciate this connection with Marion County Health Department. Thanks.
Right in the middle of strategic planning time, too, right, isn't the Health Advisory Board, the last couple of meetings I've been to, observing that they're working on that, so, important timing.
I don't have too much to add, if that's what you want, but I'm really happy you're here and looking, you said you came in 2008, and there's a list of, I can't even count them, 10 or 12 groups, committees that you're serving on, I'm really happy when active people show up.
Good.
Especially with real skills. So, Chair Cameron, I would make a motion that we do approve the order that appoints Jaclyn Lung and Sharon Hoyer to the Health Advisory Board with terms ending December 31st, 2021, that's a long time, but you'll enjoy it.
It'll go by fast, and I'll second your motion, seeing no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, appreciate your service. Our next action item is under the Sheriff's Office, consider approval of a contract for services with Dr. Lowberg for $152,250 to provide physician services to the Sheriff's Office inmates and to the juvenile department's youth. Commander Larson, good to see you.
Good morning. For the record, my name's Todd Larson, I'm the jail commander with Marion County Sheriff's Office.
And I'm Troy Gregg, Juvenile Director. Good to see you, too.
What you see before you this morning is a couple of contracts for medical services, as you guys know, the, not required by statute, but for the jail, also the Oregon jail standards. The two contracts represent a unique opportunity for juvenile and adult corrections to partner, and we've got a lot of support from county finance, county contracts, and our respective contract specialists, so Marion County Risk Management also weighed in on this, and we just appreciate the two documents that they were able to produce. For the jail, there's a slight increase in the cost with our, our former doctor retiring at the, in the fall last year, so there's slight increase, but we're still below the market value that we'd expect to pay for medical services. The benefit that I see that we have on the adult correction side is the 24 hours on-call service, so we get a couple of site visits to run clinics at the jail, but the on-call service is very, very important with booking and releasing approximately 40 to 50 people a day, we're able to ensure that they are leaving in the best possible care. We've had a great collaboration on the behavioral health side with the Marion County Health Department, and I think this opportunity with juvenile's gonna lead to great continuity of care between juvenile and adult corrections.
Yeah, and I just reiterate, Commander Larson has said the importance of having that 24/7 care and the ability, you know, in crisis situations for our staff and nursing staff to be able to contact a doctor to get some keen advice, and to also make sure that our medical files are accurate, up to date, it's, it's a requirement that we have, but we are very happy to be partnering with the Sheriff's Department in this one as well, and there is a slight increase for the juvenile department as well in this.
I've got a question, I noticed that the term of the contract is effective, it's retroactive back to October 29th of 17, through June 30th, so this, this amount is for June 30th of 2019, so this, this is for almost two years, just shy of two years of service, right?
Correct.
And we're setting those up with the fiscal year, it looks like?
Yes, sir.
For the future.
Okay.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
I don't, just, and I don't know if I should know them, but anything on Dr. Lowberg himself, background or anything? I just didn't see it in the file.
No issues we're discovering in the, in the contracting process?
All right. Chair Cameron, I make a motion that we do approve the contract for services with Dr. Lowberg for $152,250 to provide physician service to the Sheriff's Office and Juvenile Department.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That one's done. We'll go right on to the next one. It's very similar. It looks like we have two doctors that we work with, right? So this one's to consider approval of contract for services with Dr. Mitchell for $152,250 to provide physician services to the Sheriff's Office inmates and Juvenile Department's youth. Ditto?
Correct. That builds us the redundancy and the backup, not only for both buildings, but to keep the clinics open when we run those. At the jail, for example, it's twice a week. If we were to go without one of those days, without a backup doctor, the workload, well, excuse me, the workload would triple or quadruple the following week. So this ensures that we always have the on-call services as well as maintaining regular clinics.
Okay.
I think I'm just gonna go ahead and make a motion that we do approve contract for services with Dr. Mitchell for $152,000 to provide physician service for the Sheriff's and Juvenile Department.
I'll second the motion. Further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Got that done.
Thank you very much.
And it is past 9:30. So we will open under Public Works, continuation of a public hearing to consider removal of the dedication of the Mater De La Rosa Cemetery. I guess we're gonna open both at the same time. We did that last time, right?
Correct.
So also open a continuation of a public hearing to consider vacation of all public streets, alleys, and walkways created by the plat of the Mater De La Rosa Cemetery. Did I say it better that second time? De La Rosa. So staff want to come up? Let's reintroduce our, where we're at here.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Phil Jones. I'm with Marion County Department of Public Works. And as you say, we are here to continue on with the public hearing for the removal of the dedication and vacation of public streets within the Mater De La Rosa Cemetery located in Sublimity.
You said it much better than I did.
So do we want to go over some quick background on this, or would you like, or?
Go ahead and just.
Okay.
Do it quickly, yeah.
Sure. Okay. The petition was filed with Marion County from Earnmar Incorporated requesting the removal of the dedication of Mater De La Rosa Cemetery and to vacate all streets that were created by the plat of the cemetery. Cemetery was created by a plat in April 6th, on April 6th, 1964. Within the property itself at this time, there are currently five residential buildings, a private access road, and a portion of a parking lot that are currently, you know, at this time. We have a, this is a copy of the, of the plat of the cemetery that was created back in 1964. It basically shows, it's a 0.62 acre parcel with 184 lots in it. Has a 16-foot wide public roadway and walkway through it. And also a number of walkways ranging in width from two and a half to seven feet wide. The cemetery is located approximately about in the center of Marion Estates Senior Living Community within Sublimity. Here is a, an aerial photograph that shows about in the center there, which is outlined in a very thin yellow rectangle that shows sitting within the, with the parking lot and buildings and a private roadway that runs through the, the property itself at this time. There's a photo of current, current conditions at the west end looking to the east. There's the roadway and then a couple of the buildings. And then from the other direction, there's the parking lots and the private roadway as well. And petitioner provided documentation of 11 burials, which were, have been disinterred and moved to nearby St. Boniface Cemetery back in the early 1980s. And no objections to the proposed vacation had been received prior to the meeting. And recommendation of the Public Works Department is to grant the dedication removal of Mater De La Rosa Cemetery and the vacation of the public streets, alleys, and walkways vesting this right of way to the Marion Estates Senior Living Community property.
Okay. Sam?
I should have done this at the beginning, just for the record, contacts outside of the public hearing. I had three. One was with George Gershbocker, a telephone call. He's a local parishioner. Amateur historian. Summation was he didn't have any problem with this action. Tried to reach by Steve States, who was gonna tell me about the final disposition of a, of a Pieta statue that was in the cemetery. I didn't take that call, but I would like to hear that information. And I refused to talk to an Oregonian reporter wanting my comments on it. So, just for the record.
Okay. So noted. We've got some, you're done with your presentation. Great. We'll probably have you come back up if we need you. We've got several, we've got four people signed up for the hearing. First on the list is Alan Sorin.
And probably Margaret too.
And Margaret, you want to come up together? Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. Yes, my name's Alan Sorum. Address is 250 Church Street, Southeast, St. Lorikean. Along with me is my associate, Margaret Skendervo. Want to thank staff for the, their cooperation and assistance during the hearing and also the brief kind of summary of, of the information submitted in the record and last week's hearing a bit. I think, I'd like to start off, we have some, few, few letters, some, some things entered into the record that were responsive to some of the questions and comments from last week. Margaret, if you can submit those. And we've got copies for the Commissioners. So while she's passing those out, I'll just kind of give you just a run-through of what those exhibits are. So the first Exhibit A is a letter from St. Boniface Parish. Second letter is from Emery &amp; Sons regarding some excavation work that they did. The third is a copy of the official, some excerpts from the official records of St. Boniface. Fourth, Exhibit D is a service proposal letter regarding ground penetrating sonar. And the fifth is a letter from Skendervo regarding her communication. She interviewed Mr. Herman Hendricks yesterday. And then the last thing, we didn't have the time to put exhibit stickers on them yet, but it's a packet of photos. And so what we wanted to be able to do, and I'll, I'll start there, is it, I think it's a bit above and beyond what the call of criteria requires. But we originally submitted the 11 permits for this disinterment, travel, and reinterment of the remains from the state. And so those are photos showing that, in fact, those, we do have burial sites for all 11 of those human remains at the St. Boniface Cemetery. It was difficult to find all 11. Four of them had been vandalized in some, in some way. So there are just small markers. And there was some debris and things that needed to be removed around those in order to, to appropriately find them. But we've got photos with appropriate context and some close-ups. So Margaret can kind of, if, if the need arises, can walk through how the records show. You know, we've got 11 human remains permits that were moved from Mater De La Rosa to the records reflecting their reinterment at St. Boniface and the corresponding graves in those photos. So with that, with that basic introduction, I think, you know, the thing I'd like to, just gonna go back over again is, you know, starting with the criteria. ORS 97.440 gives us the right to go ahead and, you know, petition for the removal of this plat dedication. And it requires extensive noticing. All of that noticing occurred. And there's really two, two potential criteria under subsection one. Subsection A is determination that the human remains have been removed from the burial site and is no longer used for those purposes. The second being that the Oregon Commission on Historical Cemeteries has been actively notified and doesn't intend to object to the removal of those remains. I, I think both of those criteria are in play, notwithstanding the fact that the, the remains in question, none of them were prior to 1909, which are the remains of, they're probably of most historical significance under that statutory structure. That being said, I think we've got evidence in the record that satisfies both of those criteria. And there's, there's really no doubt about that. You know, we've got staff support. They've, they've reviewed our application materials. As I indicated, we appreciate their support. The questions, we got a, a question to ask, you know, does the Archdiocese, does the parish, you know, what's their position on this? What's the appropriate entity? First from the Sante Operations Company reached out to the Archdiocese and connected with the General Counsel there and indicated that's not their jurisdiction. They don't, they're not gonna be submitting comment on that. So, you know, we explained to them that we have this hearing, but they declined to go ahead and, and submit written comment either way. But we do have a comment, a letter from the, from the parish on the official paper from them that was submitted into the record. Commissioners, you have copies of that, but the, the official letter is there. So we were happy to be, you know, be able to get a response. I think Commissioner Cameron's one-week timeline was, was a bit aggressive, if I may insert an editorial comment, but we're happy to, to go ahead and have that in here. Additionally, you know, we were busy above and beyond kind of getting that. We spoke with Emery &amp; Sons. Emery &amp; Sons, they are a construction company well-known in the valley. They've done a substantial amount of work in the city of Sublimity over the years. Done work, not, not on the particular site. They didn't have records or recollection doing that. But they, they could think of a number of projects surrounding it. They didn't have any experience with remains. We did reach out to the tribe, Confederated Tribes of Grand Wrong. Spoke with Rachel Kellogg from the Office of Cultural Resource Center there. And they indicated that's not an area of interest for them. And they don't believe that, you know, they haven't been to the site, done inspections, but they have no reason to believe that would be a site of a significant history for them. As indicated, you know, there were some questions about how do the records work? And Mr. States, I get into, in a letter that our, that our office prepared, kind of getting into detail as to walking the board through why we have a different take on some of the records that he was reviewing. Regarding the, the records from St. Boniface, I think some of the source of confusion was those were records available online, and those aren't their official records. And we were able to get copies of those. So that's Exhibit C. There's some highlighted portions in there that match up to the 11 names that were on our permits. And then I guess I'll speak to the guide quickly. So the guide is that, that guide of the cemeteries. And there were, there was a passage in there speaking that there were at least three burials in 1978. It's a small paragraph. If you continue to read it, it also states that the cemetery was closed in the 1970s. I don't think that passage should be read as there was three acts of interment that occurred in 1978 after the closing of the cemetery. The author clearly didn't know when the cemetery was actually closed. I think what that meant is in the usage of the word "burials" is there were three burial sites, at least three burial sites that the author was aware of. That's the proper context and the proper meaning of that word "burials" when you, when you read that together. So I don't think that guide should be given mu, much reason for concern, especially in the weight of all of the evidence that we've been able to submit, you know, with the records regarding the, the reinterment, the review of the St. Boniface records. And then the, and then, you know, kind of the burying the lead. I mean, this, when you look at the aerial photo of the site, the site's fully developed. And, you know, we know, you know, we know that happened. So, and we've had laws regarding removal of burials. So there's no reason to believe that there are human remains still on site. We appreciate the parish for speaking as to any lingering interest they may have. And then the last thing I'll, I'll speak before I solicit some questions would be the, the ground penetrating sonar. So the Oregon Commission on Historic Cemeteries did not require us to have that. And we reached out to some service providers and learned a little bit more about that industry. And what we learned is, you know, because there's a number of trees, shrubs, and structures on the site, together with the description of how the remains were, what shape they were upon reinterment, what kind of caskets they were used, there's just very little reason to believe that even if there were anything that, any remains that would be there, that the ground penetrating radar would be able to, to speak to that. So I feel confident in saying that we've done everything in, you know, practically possible to go above and beyond the call of the criteria to try to create a, a record where the board can feel comfortable with and saying, yes, the, all the notifications were required. The state doesn't have any concerns. And additionally, we've got substantial evidence in the record that there are no human remains on site. And we've got records of where those bodies were moved. And we've also got the physical photographic evidence to, to match up those records to kind of address any concerns over inconsistent record-keeping. So that, that's really the, the essence of my comments this morning. Are there any matters I didn't cover or additional questions or concerns from the Commissioners?
No, I don't have any.
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, my one-week timeline was pretty tight, but I like doing things quick, getting it done.
Understood, sir.
Thank you. Go down here and then come here. Scott Moss? Okay, Steve States?
Hi, I'm Steve States. I live at 848 Belmont Street. I testified at last week's hearing. And I only have four concerns about all this. But first I want to comment on the testimony that was just given. And that is that the Historical Commission, the Heritage Commission, cannot comment and cannot object to the removal through the county of the dedication of the cemetery. I talked to them and they said they have no jurisdiction. It's not that they approved it and that they had no problem with it. It's that they cannot. It's not that they approved it and that they had no problem with it, it's that they cannot object to it. The Grand Ron Indian Tribe, I talked to them and I talked to the same people and they told me they absolutely have no jurisdiction to come before the county since they are an independent, separate government agency, that they can't come before the county and object to the removal of the dedication of the cemetery. So they didn't give their approval and it's not like they had any reason to ever go out there because they weren't allowed to go out there. They're not allowed to go messing with other people's jurisdiction. The, speaking of the ground penetrating radar, yeah, it can't be used, especially on the two buildings that were built in 1986, right after Weddell provided the letter saying that all the bodies had been removed. Well, there's no way to really get underneath those, but yeah, you can use ground penetrating radar around trees and around their roots and you can use it in parking lots. You can use it in many places, but to get to the buildings, you'd have to go in the crawl spaces and it's interesting that those buildings don't have basements, they only have crawl spaces. But you could get in there and do that. But my four concerns, that, one of them is that it was built in, the two big buildings, the two fourplexes, eight units, were built in 1986 without removal of the dedication of the cemetery through the county. And I don't know how that occurred. Number two is that if eight bodies were moved from Madre de la Rosa, in addition to one nun, from what I can see, even though they're saying 11, there were only nine removed based on the birth certificates for Sister Ziegler and Sister Romano, who died in 1958 and 1962 respectively, before the cemetery was even platted. Yet Weddell is claiming that they were buried on Madre de la Rosa when we have death certificates proving that they were buried originally in St. Boniface when they died. So no one here has explained how Weddell, who is claiming that he dug up their bodies and put them in Madre de la Rosa, when he's the one that buried them in St. Boniface in the first place. So that kind of speaks to questioning some credibility of the removal of the bodies. So they also spoke that all the bodies, all eight bodies, in addition to the supposed three nuns that they moved, were certified or that they can show through the church records that the bodies were moved. Although if you look at the information I gave last week, I actually took a photograph of the church records and sure enough, Max Lohe and Nan Lane are not on those records. They are not buried in the cemetery. Even though it was certified that they were dug up from Madre de la Rosa and reburied in St. Boniface, it's not on the cemetery records. The other ones are, yes, and yeah, four headstones are gone. Nobody knows where they went or how they disappeared. So then my fourth one was, I basically already discussed it, was how the death certificates for the two nuns, Sister Ziegler and Sister Romano, could have been certified as having been buried in Madre de la Rosa when they died and were buried in St. Boniface before the cemetery was even platted. That's all I have. Any questions?
Questions?
No.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Rotano, did you want me to talk about?
Go ahead if you might as well.
Okay, I will be happy to. I don't have the information here, but someone sent me the original Oregonian article on the pieta that the five Sisters of Servite ordered from Corra, Italy, that the, there was a pieta that was hand carved that's identical to the pieta that's at St. Peter's Basilica at Vatican City, except that it's three-quarter size, but it was carved from exactly the same marble that the original pieta was carved from. And it was, if you looked on the plat, it was in the round part of the cemetery. That was the memorial. And the nurses raised the money through Catholic petitioners in Sublimity to be able to buy that. And then when the previous owner had the, they also had a really large redwood cross with INRE on the cross. And those were both in the dedication, I mean, in the memorial part of the cemetery in honor of the dead who were buried there. And when, in 1986, when the cemetery was built on, those were removed and nobody knew where they went, but they are on the property still. And I know where they are. It's pretty obvious where they are. I've got photographs on my phone if you'd like to see them. And I believe wholeheartedly that because the, there are three of the five Sisters of Servite in St. Boniface now, that there's no reason for the original owner to have ever not transferred the pieta and the redwood cross to St. Boniface Cemetery where the Sisters of Servite are and where they will always be, hopefully, this time. And that the current owners have, since if you do vacate the cemetery, there's no reason in the world why they should remain on that property. From what I understand, statues and things like that are not real property, they're personal property. Those should have never been kept, they should have been transferred in the first place and they should be transferred to the St. Boniface Cemetery now and donated. Not that they actually owned them, but they were purchased with money from the community. That's all I have.
Thank you. It's not related, but I was interested. Thank you. It's not directly related.
No, it's not, but it's interesting.
I appreciate the history.
So we can talk more about it. I have photos and articles.
Thank you, Mr. States.
Thank you.
So do we, anybody?
Come back to Alan and Margaret.
Yeah. Alan, did you want to come back up?
Yeah, just a minute, please.
All right.
Try to limit our comments here for just a few minutes. Again, for the record, Alan Sorum. You know, regarding the comment, you know, the tribe was willing to speak with us and was willing to speak with Mr. States. In interest of time, we didn't get anything written in the record, but certainly the, the Oregon Commission on Historic Cemeteries submitted direct comments to staff. So they don't, you know, maybe they, they don't see themselves as having jurisdiction over this hearing. This, when you read the statute, it isn't to be in order of this body. So that's correct to say it's not jurisdiction, but it's not correct to say that they don't see themselves as not having the ability to comment. Clearly their, their written comments are to the contrary there. Regarding any personal property, you know, that can be between the property owner and the church, there's a good working relationship there. If there's a desire for that, they can discuss those terms and, you know, donation of that if that's, if that's something that's desired and called for, but that.
I'm sorry, Alan, that was my fault for outside of the hearing.
Yeah, it's not.
An intriguing question.
It's not, it's not related to, to the criteria, certainly no.
I was going to gavel you.
Allegation of remains.
Well, you should.
You know, I, I wish we had perfect records from the city of Sublimity so I could, you know, give you a big stack and tell you exactly what happened in 86. I don't, I don't have that. And, you know, I really wish that, that plat had been vacated, you know, in 84, 86, in that time period. It wasn't, but that doesn't forestall this, this body from looking at the criteria and making the decision for them. And then I, I'll, as to the other comments, I'll let our records regarding Max Lo and Nan Lane and, and the photos speak for themselves. I guess Margaret, just if you could speak to that just real quick.
Yeah. Margaret Ganderbo for the record. We talked to Herman Hendricks yesterday and outlined in my letter, he recalls moving all three, or I believe all three nuns, from the St. Boniface Church to the Madre de la Rosa Cemetery when it was opened and then moving them back again via the permits. We don't have any records of him receiving permits to move them the first time, but we do have the records moving them back and his recollection indicates that it was done properly and respectfully on request of the church. Both moves were guided by the church. We do have in the pictures that we submitted, Nan Lane, she isn't reflected in the church records because as we mentioned earlier, those markers are really difficult to find and very illegible. Nan Lane, you can see Nan and she's in the row where all of the other individuals that were moved are currently located. As to Max, he's one of the unknown ones as well. It's, I can't read specifically his name anywhere, but it logically, he's in one of the unmarked, currently unmarked graves there.
Thank you. Those are our comments and we would ask that the hearing be closed, but that is up to your discretion, obviously. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Phil, did you want to come back up? Anything you want to add? Questions you have for staff, Sam?
No, I have more, nothing else to add at this time.
Okay. Commissioner, any questions?
No, just more comments. Pretty high confidence. Well, how do I, I don't know where to start. I was mayor, actually, of Sublimity during this time. I'm trying to make the point, I don't believe that there's, there's other grave sites in the area. There was construction done, never any comment on, you know, on, on finding grave sites. I'm pretty well convinced that there are. Herman Hendricks was mentioned here a moment ago. He's been in charge of, of the cemetery for 20, my whole experience probably in Sublimity, actually. So a pretty high confidence that he knows what he's saying and does. So, so what the construction has been done in the area, the water lines we've dug, it's just not been an issue and that's personal knowledge, I guess. My, my one problem was, was about the radar. It seems like that's extraordinary. If you had some, some real feelings that, that there were graves that you wanted to find or suspicion that they were there, then, then maybe, but I don't think it's called for in anything I can see. I would like to kind of know that if there is any further construction in the area, how that would be handled. And Bruce, I'm going to call on you because I was, I did talk to you about this and explain to everybody what happens in the future if, if something should be found.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, for the record, Bruce Armstrong, Inuram County Council. I did some research and, and made some phone calls. The Oregon Commission on Historic Cemeteries made a reference to the fact that in their letter where they said they didn't, they weren't blocking the removal of the dedication, they made a reference to the fact that there had been this development on the property, but they included a line to the effect that a request that our building department perhaps flagged the property, so that if there is future development, a building permit applied for, that the commission could be notified. And then, and in their letters, the commission asserts that they have a level of authority and that the archaeology, archaeology laws apply to this area or this site. But if they are notified, then they can review matters. They make suggestions in their letters with reference to the applicants. But if they are notified, then they could view the matter if they believe a permit should have been obtained and a permit hasn't been obtained, they can take legal action. So I made a phone call to our building official, our planning director, Warren Jackson, and he confirmed that we would, we do have the capability to make a note, flag the file so that if there is an application for a building permit, that the commission could be notified. So if that's, if that's responsive to your question, Commissioner?
Just a little expansion. What if just any construction, a water line, a power line, any excavation, would that show up or maybe they would or would not need a permit? But they still are going to be responsible if something would happen. They're going to be responsible for all the proper methods for dealing with it.
Yeah, I, we can't advise the applicant, but the commission has put them on notice in terms of their expectations, that they would have a development plan and that this, that they would consult with the commission and as part of that consultation, perhaps obtain a permit if there was any activity on the property. I don't think if it's just a water line or something of that, since a building permit wouldn't be required, we wouldn't have no, we wouldn't have the capability to put the commission on notice.
Can I put in a motion to, to have that flagging done?
You can direct.
Or is it going to be done automatically? Well, that's what I want to know.
I think you can direct staff. I don't think, it does not need to be a part of the motion. I think that is, you can direct me, I can, I can communicate that or, I don't think it needs to be, you can make a part of the motion, but I don't think that's necessary. It's part of your duties.
Do you have any disagreement with that flagging?
Well, you can put it in the motion if you want.
Yeah, I think that's what I'd like it to be.
So it's in the record.
Okay. Then just a couple of other comments of, of real significance to me was a letter from St. Boniface and it just describes this situation. I didn't know about the basic act of, of removing the dedication, but it says under canon law, sacred places lose their dedication or blessing if they have been in great measure destroyed or if they've been permanently made over to secular usage. And certainly a situation that we have here, so that clears it up. And it was significant to me that the, Alan and Margaret brought letters from Emery &amp; Sons. They have and did for me lots of work and, as I was kind of referring to, in the city of Sublimity. And I should also note, there's been an adjoining rather large, I think 88-home subdivision, pretty well built out in the last couple of years on the Hess, Hessing property that has, and nothing has come up there either. So, and that there was a mention of the larger area and again, I just don't have evidence that there's graves there any different than anywhere else in Marion County and they are scattered around Marion County. So unless you have some more comments.
Well, just before you make a motion, I, I just want to thank everybody who came before, the, the detail of work that's been done by all parties in this and I'm looking at you because you're the local historian.
No, I'm not, but I know him.
My, my point being is this is your home turf, right? And I really respect your thoughts and, and conclusions on this, so, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Just if I could address one matter. Mr. Sorum spoke to the statute and articulated that he believes there's two standards that, and he states that the applicants have met both. I don't view it the same as him. There's the first requirement that, or it's not the first, the first standard is that you need proof satisfactory that the property that's subject to the dedication is not being used for interment of human remains. I believe that's the standard. The second standard is about the commission being notified. It references that it applies to, for property, removal of property, human remains and markers dated prior to February 14th, 1909. So I don't believe that second standard applies in this situation. Obviously, there's an evidentiary aspect of the commission submitting their comment in it, but I think your decision needs to be predicated on the reasonable belief that there are not human remains at the property.
Okay. Okay. And I think I've just stated that, so I'm not going to repeat it. Did I say something that would sound counter to that, Bruce?
No, I just wanted to address Mr. Sorum's statement.
All right, thank you. So Chair Cameron, if I could, I would make a motion that we close both public hearings and do, let's see, do, go ahead.
I would suggest doing one, one at a time.
All right, I'll close, I'd make a motion that we close the public hearing having to do with the removal of dedication of Madre de la Rosa Cemetery.
I'll second the motion. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor closing the public hearing? Say aye.
Aye. And approving the removal, is that clear?
Well, you want to make a motion to do that?
I meant him to be, to do both on that item. Is that how you understood it?
Well, you, you just made a motion to close the public hearing, but.
Let's do it just, just correctly if I could then. I would make a motion that we close the public hearing. close the public hearing and approve the removal of the dedication of the Madre de la Rosa Cemetery.
Okay.
Good.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay.
That's clear. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And then now on item B, the second public hearing, make a motion to close that public hearing and approve the vacation of all public streets, alleys, and walkways created by the plat of the Madre de la Rosa Cemetery.
Yeah, I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No, I probably should have said before, no discussion. I certainly, Steve States, I appreciate all the work you've done, and I don't know how you have that ability to find those things, and thank you for bringing your questions forward.
You know, there's, there was somebody signed up here.
On this one?
January seventeenth, underneath, I'm sorry, Robert Byrd?
Oh, I'm sorry, I just had signed in, I don't, it was, actually, just here to listen.
Okay, it was under, it was on a different sheet, and I just flipped through and saw it, sorry.
Bruce was panicking.
I'm sure you would have raised your hand, you would have said, hey, what about me?
All right.
Phil, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you to everybody, and I agree with you, you know, all parties have put in a lot of work on this. So I think we're done with our normal business. This is still one page, so it's not gotten too much longer, but I'll read the places where we're going to be, what we're going to be doing over the next week or so. From here, Thursday, the eighteenth, we have a city of Salem, Marion County meeting at the Sassy Onion at twelve forty-four State Street. On Monday, the twenty-second, at eight thirty a.m., calendar review here in the, on the fifth floor, in the Silverton Conference Room. Also on Monday, the twenty-second, at nine a.m., a management update here in this building at, on the fifth floor, in the Silverton Conference Room. Also on Monday, the twenty-second, Board of Commissioners, Chief Administrative Officer, executive session if needed pursuant to O R S one nine two dot six six two, two A B D F H I, to begin immediately following management update in the Silverton Conference Room here on the fifth floor. Also Monday, Monday's a busy day. Monday at one thirty, the twenty-second, Congressman Schrader's Roundtable, location is at Shemek at a business, Center for Business and Industry, room one oh two on six two six High Street, Salem. Moving on to Tuesday, the twenty-third, at eight thirty a.m., Community Corrections Board, location is here in the fifth floor in the Silverton Conference Room. Also Tuesday, the twenty-third, twelve p.m., Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council Steering Committee, fifth floor, Silverton Conference Room. Tuesday, the twenty-third, at three o'clock, Marion County Extension four eight Service District Meeting, here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. The twenty-third, Tuesday, at three o'clock, oh, I just said that one. Perfection.
Yeah, it'll come.
Yeah, it'll come. The twenty-fourth, Wednesday, we're back here for our board session at nine a.m. Still working on that perfection. Thank goodness for forgiveness and mercy. Well, from some. Anything you want to chat about?
Well, one, we have a breakfast, a Salem breakfast tomorrow, Commissioner Carlson won't be there. I'm going to be in Eugene for a timber meeting this afternoon, evening, O N C Board, but it's a funny meeting, it's from five to eight, so I may just not stay and could...
Come back.
I would like to be there if I can.
It's noticed, I'll be there.
Okay, so, I don't have any great thing to say, but I do value what, what comes up in those meetings.
Yeah, we haven't been together with them for a couple of months, I think, so...
No, I don't, and I don't want, it's important to me, I don't want it to die away, it's something we established the last couple of years.
Right.
I can't think of too much else. I don't know why, what, I'll have, I'll be reporting on what, what, why this meeting, this timber meeting at this hour, there's something, it's not when we normally hold our meetings, I can't get from the agenda what it is that they want to talk about.
Make sure you report our thirty-five hundred dollar contribution, or thirty-seven hundred dollar contribution, on some logs that are being cut out of a piece of property at Fisherman's Bend to the O N C fund. Yeah, I've got a busy day today, I'm going up to French Prairie, meeting, I haven't been there for a month or so, and then Federal Lakes Meeting tonight up at Gates.
Now, I'm sorry I'm missing that one, too, but this, I'll say it out loud for the record, this sounds ridiculous, so, I hope common sense can play in. I don't think it does anything that changes anything, but it has potential to truly risk damages to Marion County and fish and wildlife that they say they're trying to protect.
I know, I, I got some feedback on my quote that was in the paper, well, obviously, when you interview with the newspaper, they don't, they don't record everything.
Oh, now that isn't true.
Record everything that you said, and, you know, I said it was, it was a good project in the long term, you know, that, that we could get a, a water mixing tower, temperature mixing tower behind the dam.
Poo, I see.
Huh?
Is that official language?
Pooey?
Poo.
Poo. So, long term, you know, because it's going to help with fish passage and, and temperature and all that, but short term, the risks are involved, when you take that lake down to three-ten, they can't generate power, they cannot, how are they going to keep the water supply for Staten and Salem?
And farmers, and fish themselves?
Right, so, it's just all these risks that they have by taking the lake down in the middle of the summertime, to be able to do this thing. But one of the things that I did as I stand, and I took, I took the, I met Army Corps and the Statesman Journal there on Friday, spent about an hour, and then went up and talked with some of the business people, and, you know, if, if they knew they were only going to be down a year, they may be able to, one of the marinas says, hey, I can make some plans to do some things, and, you know, probably can survive a year, but if it's down two or three years, it's, it's the, you know, it's a logging disaster all over again, they lose, they lose those marinas. But then on Saturday, I took the tour, and I spent about three hours in, between both dams. It was a good aerobic workout, Sam.
Oh, really?
Oh, gosh.
I know.
Oh, man, I mean, I was looking, I looked back at, at Ed Flick, and he was like taking his jacket off, sweating, and we were in the middle of the dam, walking up these stairs, and I looked down where we came, and I looked back up, and I still couldn't see the end of them. But my point being is, when you stand on top of that dam, it's, or go through it, it's, it's really an education, and there was a fallout, there's fallout shelters there that they built back in the sixties.
Good thing to know.
I should go...
Should get a missile alert, I'm heading to Detroit.
So, so, exactly, there's a, there's this ladder you go down, and we were in one of these fallout shelters, and here's these, I've got one in my car, I have to bring it up to the office, there's this box or tin can of crackers that was packed in November of nineteen sixty-two.
In a brown kind of government...
Brown, yeah.
Yeah, we've had them at the fire department, they've sold a surplus for emergencies.
Yeah, they've, he's got a whole...
Crackers are still good.
Whole bunch of, I don't know, I didn't open it and try to eat them, you want to try it? So I just thought it was pretty interesting, the history, the history behind that, and inside that dam, and, and actually, was it called stalactites, you know, like in caves?
Yes.
Where the water down...
Well, because it does drip through.
Yeah, we're actually standing down at the base, and we're at like, what did he say, we were at ten forty-seven elevation? So we were below the water, you know, we were down like in the dirt at that level almost, and it's cold down there, it's all green from moss, and they have a sub-pump, because water comes down in there, leaks in, and they have to get the, the water out, otherwise the dam would end up filling up with water. And then we're standing there talking, and all of a sudden, the siren goes off, oh, you know, and it's like, what's that? And he says that's a five-minute warning of them starting the generator, or starting the turbines.
Oh, no.
And when they, when they started that, that water flowed through there...
It shudders.
That whole dam sounds, I mean, it sounds like just this huge freight train coming at you, the water when it first goes through. Twenty, I think it's a fifty-foot pipe, that this water just flows through these turbines, and it, it calms down after it gets going, but the first flush is just like, so that was great.
That's a little off the subject, but not, my grandfather, Archie Samuel, told a story that he helped with the construction, but a little different of the dam, right when I was born, actually, and his, they must have done it different, but they would literally scrape the, all the trees and scrape the sides down to what would be the reservoir, and they use two D-eight cats, and they go drum to drum and lower, lower the way down. And Grandpa was apparently unhappy with the way the guy on the top cat was coordinating in, in language I won't use here, said, well, I'll just go without you, and he went down, he had the ride of his life, he said, it, it just freewheeled or run away down the side of the reservoir there, and he, he brought the blade down on a rock or a stump, he said it tipped up to, and hovered there, and then settled back, and then he had to go back and apologize to the guy, that's what he just hated.
Well, you just described, oh, that's what I said, when I stood up on top of the dam, and they, I said, you're going to take it down to thirteen-ten, now how do you, how do you build in the dry if you still have water, right? Well, that canyon is so steep where the dam is, they'll actually go to thirteen-ten, and over, over here, it'll be dry, and they'll put that mixing tower on the side, on the slope, into the bedrock. That's how they're going to design this thing. They got, they got a lot of work to do before they get there, but...
I'm not happy. But you know, I don't think they ask us, do they? We got any rule?
Well, they do, we need to, we need to send some, I think the comments are due by Friday or next week.
Can I just say poo?
Yeah.
All right. No, Bruce, isn't that, that's not government language?
Before he says anything else, I think I, I might adjourn this meeting before he says anything else on the record, all right? We don't want to be like, what was it, Maloma County Commissioners?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, watch what you say to me, we're adjourned.